Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on May 3rd, 2022. This is the first regular city commission meeting of the city of Ormond Beach and we are in commission chambers. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in tonight by our planning director, Stevens Breaker, and city engineer, Alex Schuman, who served as greeters this evening. And I'd like to take a minute now and introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. Our recording secretary, Taylor Lockhart. Our city clerk, Susan Daughtry. If you want to speak this evening, she's the person that you need to get your card to. Actually, hand it to Taylor and she'll hand it to Susan. Then we have on the commission Dwight Selby from Zone 1. Commissioner Troy Kent, Zone 2.
Good evening, everybody.
Our deputy mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
And our Zone 4 Commissioner, Rob Littleton. Also with us, City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, our city attorney Randy Hayes. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington, and I don't want to leave out, to my far left, to your far right, our police chief Jesse Godfrey joining us this evening, and our interim fire chief David King. At this time, if you would please silence your cell phones and rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation is given by Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health.
Good evening, thank you. Let's bow our heads. God of hope and love, through your mercy and protection, we've made it to this new month of May. Thank you for watching over each of us and our city of Ormond Beach. Tonight, we lift up to you, our mayor and city leaders, and thank you for watching over them and giving them wisdom and guidance in handling the business and concerns of our city and its people. Bless this meeting tonight and guide the decisions that will be made. We ask you this in your holy name.
Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what just stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if we could have the Kiwanis Group come forward with Dylan. He'll bring everybody up and face towards the audience. Taylor's going to hand you the proclamation, and this is for Kiwanis Ormond Beach Reads, which is a really great program that Kiwanis has been doing to help our children during the summer. Whereas, Kiwanis is a global organization with over 7,300 clubs across 85 nations. Kiwanis consists of volunteers dedicated to changing the world through service to children and communities. The organization believes that no problem is too big or too small, including that of ensuring child literacy. And whereas research shows that children who do not read in the summer can lose two to three months of reading development, and children that read four or more books over the summer perform better on reading comprehension tests in the fall than their peers who read one or no books over the summer. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Ormond Beach hosts multiple projects throughout the year, with most of them focusing on helping children learn to read, the Kiwanis Club's signature project is Kiwanis Reads. The award-winning program's three pillars include building home libraries, building classroom libraries, and building a culture of independent reading across Ormond Beach. Whereas Kiwanis Reads, a summer reading challenge readathon promotes ongoing literacy for elementary school-aged through the summer and challenges students to read 20 minutes a day over the summer break. And whereas each year, the Kiwanis Club sponsors 300-plus students from Ormond Beach Elementary School through the summer program. In 2020, Ormond Beach Elementary School finished third in the entire state of Florida in minutes read. And whereas in an effort to sustain the program and continue providing books to students all year long, the Kiwanis Club has partnered with the GiveBacks app to launch Backers for Books, a free cash back app that gives backers, consumers, cash back from retailers and restaurants. Kiwanis Reads will donate a new book to an Ormond Beach Elementary student for every active backer. When you give a child a chance to learn, experience, dream, and succeed, great things happen. Based on all of that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby declare May 16th, 2022 as the kickoff of Kiwanis Reads 2022 in the city of Ormond Beach, and urge all residents to engage in activities whose purpose is to promote ongoing literacy support for elementary-age school children. Congratulations to you all. Do you want to get a picture? Dylan, let's get, we want to get a picture behind you guys, support you as much as we can. Jen's going to tell you where to go. He might just shift over a little bit. Yep.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Can you, if I get you a microphone and you just explain how that app works? Okay. We're going to get Dylan a microphone. Taylor, where'd you get it? Of course, whoever's got it. Perfect. Yep. Perfect. He's going to explain how this app works. It doesn't really cost you anything. It's kind of an add-on, but the city is going to help out. I think we're going to maybe advertise it in our water bills, and there was one other thing. Oh, let all our employees know so they could participate if they want to. And, you know, Deputy Mayor Persis, I think, worked with this program when she was the principal at Ormond Beach Elementary, and she saw the wonderful things that could happen as a result of it. So, please just explain it to us real quick again.
Sure. Yeah. So, GiveBacks is, it's a new app that really helps you support causes that you care about every day by just shopping as you normally do. So, it's a free app that you download from Android or your iPhone, and once you download it, it walks you through the steps. And then you have access to shop as you normally do at 25,000 local and regional retailers and restaurants. And what's unique about it is there is a lot of cash back things out there. You see the ads all the time, and then there's apps that give money back to causes. Well, Backers for Books is what we're calling our version of GiveBacks, and it does both. So, you as the consumer, or what we call backers, will be able to earn cash back every time that you shop. It's automatic. It goes into your little wallet, and at that point, you could either cash it out, spend the money, which we all need a little extra cash now, right? Or you could pass that, your cash back on to Kiwanis Reads. So, what we're doing for the next six months, working with GiveBacks, is we've arranged for everybody that downloads GiveBacks, and the first time that you make a purchase, we're going to donate a book to Ormond Beach Elementary School. And the main reason we're kind of adding this on to Kiwanis Reads is because, you know, you heard Mayor Partington talk about the summer slide. As Persis, you're very aware of the summer slide, but now we have what? The COVID slide, right? So, we want to make sure that Kiwanis Reads is not just a summer program, it's year-round. So, our goal is to raise over $10,000 through Backers for Books throughout the course of the year. So, the more we could share Backers for Books and get people out there saving money, earning cash back, the more books we're going to be able to pour in Ormond Beach Elementary School. And if it does extremely well, we're going to add on the other four Ormond Beach Elementary Schools. So, again, very excited to have you guys on board supporting us, and we look forward to seeing it work out.
And Dylan, so it can work a little bit as a hedge against inflation, I guess, if you're making a little cash back on each sale, but also it works in conjunction with other credit cards, cash back programs?
Yeah, I told you about that. See, it's called stacking. If you guys ever heard that, there's experts on the web that do these blogs where they teach people how to stack different discount programs together so you get even more cash back. So, if you, for example, have a Capital One 2% cash back card, you could link that card to the GiveBacks Backer for Books app, and then you'll not only get the, earn the cash back from the GiveBacks app, you'll also get your regular 2%. So, there's a lot of ways you could look at the different rewards programs that you're participating in with, you know, right now, and simply add GiveBacks to that, and you'll be able to double up. It's called stacking. That's all the rage now.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you. Great. Thank you. All right. We will now start our audience remarks, and Carolyn Brenner is first up.
Now that the developer has submitted a proposal for the redevelopment of the Timoca Oaks Golf Course, I ask you to consider the following points before you give your approval. Traffic. I am certain that as you speak with your constituents around our city, regardless of neighborhood, regardless of beachside or mainland, everyone is concerned about the growing traffic problem. An additional 500-plus homes that would come with a new development of the size being requested will only exacerbate the issue. Two, safety. The North St. Andrews, South St. Andrews, and Rio Penar Loop is already dangerous. As you know, we have no sidewalks, the streets are poorly illuminated, making it difficult for walkers, bicyclists, children, and drivers. We also have long straightaways where drivers accelerate even if they don't intend to. The environmental impact. The additional, the additional strain on our water system and the required sewer systems must be considered before any approval is given to a large redevelopment. Quality of life. I ask that you consider the quality of life of the residents surrounding the redevelopment, many of whom have supported Ormond Beach for years. The necessary construction vehicles that will have to use our entrance to Timoca Oaks on a daily basis will make it difficult for residents to access their own homes. And finally, as Conditto, it will be very difficult for our residents there to exit and turn left to get out of the neighborhood. I ask that you consider reducing the number of homes that the developer has requested. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Joseph Valerio.
My name is Joseph Valerio. I live at 1213 North Side Drive. I'm here to talk about this upcoming OB Life meeting on May 10th. I'm urging you to change the format of that meeting to allow people in Zone 1 who I've been talking to to voice their opinion, what their concerns are about that airport extension. And so, the way it's set right now, they're not going to have a voice. It's not set up that way. And I'm asking you to consider changing it to do that. Very thank. You may know that I've been in aerospace business for probably 40 years. Most of it's in general aviation, so I understand fully technically about aviation, and I'm not against airplanes, things like that. But I am opposed to the airport extensions, you probably already know, and I can't ever see myself ever changing my opinion on that. We have an airport in Daytona Beach. We're not in competition with them to put the better airport. So, I just want you to understand that we need to listen to people in Zone 1, because I've been talking to them, and they're telling me what they believe in, and I just want to relay that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Glenn Storch.
Thank you.
The recordman name is Glenn Storch, and what I'm asking you to look at today is a proposed, or a proposed, called A, and A is the public's best recommendation. The idea is to encourage builders to actually incorporate energy efficiency, wind hardening, energy reduction, solar energy, all the things that we're looking to do, and encouraging people to do with green energy, and finding a way of paying for it. And what this does is it creates a program where it allows for folks to basically create a mini taxing district on their property. And so, that mini taxing district, by putting it on there, means it's on the tax rolls. And by doing that, it lowers the rates for loans, the cost, so you can have lower costs and longer-term loans on those improvements. So, the idea is to create this win-win. It's been done on a number of counties and cities throughout the state, I think over 50 at this point. The state of Florida authorizes, authorized under 163. All I'm asking tonight is for the council, for the commission, to direct staff to look at this and potentially bring back a proposed resolution that we can then discuss. I know this is public participation. I'm not good at making presentations in public participation. Because I speak too long. But the, but the bottom line is that this seems like something worthy of looking at and worthy of coming back with. And if it is, then it's something that will increase the values of the properties in Ormond Beach. It will increase the safety because they'll be hurricane hardened, and it'll increase energy efficiency. So, all those things seem good and certainly worth looking at. I can't find the downside yet, especially on a case-by-case basis. This is a case that I'm looking at doing this for an ALF, which I'd love to have hurricane hardening and energy efficiency in. So, that's my pitch. If we could change to look at this, if the council can direct staff to look at that, that's all. Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate that. Next is Sam Jordan.
I appreciate your time and attention. My stepfather, who's in the back right there, he walks his dog twice a day, South Ridgewood Avenue, comes down to the corner of Timoca and South Ridgewood, does it every day. Dog's name is Sunny, not a mean bone in her. She's always smiling, beautiful dog. He was walking Saturday evening, and there was a dog attached to a tree by the church, and the dog got loose. The dog immediately came over to Sunny, latched onto the top of her left leg, and would not let go. My stepfather is a strong guy. He was able to grab the dog's collar and twist it and keep twisting it and hurt his hand in the process to cut off the dog's breathing capability to get him to let go. Sunny's making a recovery. It's slow, it's painful. She has over 30 stitches. Two of the gashes were so deep that they have drip tubes in them. I was pleased to learn that there's a dog ordinance for stuff like this, and Commissioner Kent and me spoke about it. I am here tonight because I had a representative from the police department come yesterday and drop off and make sure everything on the form that was filled out was correct, and then he came by today to give me a copy of it. And this gentleman, when I let him know that I'm aware of the ordinance, he started debating with me as to why there's a good chance a dog won't be enforced for this ordinance. He was saying things like, well, it may have been on a different address, and the first bite may not have been so bad. What you have before you is a dangerous dog. It's a pit bull mix, and it has a bad past. I'm not concerned about my stepdad and Sunny, because if they get caught up in again, the dog's going to get shot. But do you really want scared neighbors walking around with their guns at night because there's a dog out with a careless owner that has gotten out twice now, back in November, and now Saturday? So, I spoke with Captain Roos today. He's on board. He understands and he agrees. I spoke with Joyce, the city manager, today. She heard my story. She understands and she agrees. This dog, this ordinance for this dog needs to be enforced, and I will not stop until it is enforced. This is a dangerous dog. It needs to be, it needs to be enforced. And if I have to bring everybody from the neighborhood that's scared of this dog in front of you to prove that point, then in two weeks from now, I will do that. I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norman Lane.
I'd like to object to the city telling residents that the proposed runway extension is going to make the airport quieter. The flyer that was published said that, Mayor Partington's article in the newspaper said it is going to make it quieter airport. It's simply not true. These statements are based on the idea that the aircraft are going to take off earlier and thus be at a higher altitude as they go across residences that are located right at the end of the runway. But that only helps the small number of people that live right at the end of the runway. There are thousands of us, including myself, who live some distance from the airport, that are constantly listening to the noise of the aircraft. And taking off 500 feet earlier, a few hundred feet earlier, is not going to make any difference to that. So, saying that it's going to make it quieter is misleading. I live, like I said, in Northbrook. I back up to Timoca Park. It's pretty far from the airport. It's a very peaceful place, lots of trees and wildlife. That's why I chose it. I love being there. But the noise is just constant, early in the morning, late at night, all day long. It really detracts from my enjoyment. I know that there's nothing that we can do about that present situation, just the way it is, but I really don't want to make it worse. I don't want to invite this, more people to make this worse. This extension will definitely increase traffic at the airport, especially of larger, louder aircraft, including multi-engine propeller planes and small jets. Developers aren't out there building these fancy hangars because for the good of themselves, they were out there to make some, get some business. They expect more traffic. We could have flight schools specializing in training for these larger aircraft. There's nothing to stop it once that runway is built. So, all the people, thousands of people who live under the flight paths of these planes are going to be impacted. So, when the city says that this extension is going to make the aircraft, the runway quieter, that is purposefully misleading residents, and I hope that you will avoid this misrepresentation at the OB Life meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Bob Blankenship.
Good evening. How are you all today? Good, Bob. Good. Good to see all of you. I think you've had some email contact with me. I won't go into your answers, which some of them probably wasn't very good. I can let you guys respond to that if you want, but I'm also here about the runway extension. As we all know, you've supported this airport probably for the last 20 years. You're over 650,000 in debt to the community fund. I don't know how many hundreds of thousands you've spent trying to get this runway extension so you can get your federal government money. But the people, the general people of this community don't need it and don't want it. You know how many licenses, airport pilot licenses are in this country? Less than 1%. Same way here. So, you're meeting the demands of less than 1% of your population. And I'm sure you're going to hear that when you have your OB Life meeting next week. But it's time for us to take the gloves off, you guys. Facebook is wide open. It's getting all the information. We have emails, contacts with the FAA, with the Department, the Florida Department, that you've been talking to, the emails. Some of the people have paid money to get that freedom of information. It's all going to go public. And we all know that it's not going to benefit the general public here. If it was, you wouldn't continue to pour money into it to try to get this money from the federal government. And I was told that that's not taxpayers' money. But we all know economics, right? Study of common sense. When you, when you tax an individual or you tax a corporation, what happens to that? The cost, the goods go up. The cost of transport goes up. So, who pays for that? General public. So, it is a tax on us. I would strongly advise you guys to look at this and look at the numbers. No business, no business would invest into a business that requires somebody to keep pouring money into it to keep it going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. The minutes from the April 19th, 2022 commission meeting have been provided to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I move approval of the minutes from April 19th, 2022.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The consent agenda, does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And at this time, are there any commissioners that wanted to comment on any consent agenda items? Commissioner Kent.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly talk about Item B, where we just approved a resolution authorizing Hall of Development. They're going to, Paul Hollub is going to build the outdoor basketball court and install new lighting at the South Ormond Neighborhood Center. I just publicly wanted to say thank you to Mr. Hollub for stepping forward and doing this. And I know that former Commissioner Bohm helped lead the charge with the South Ormond Neighborhood Center, taking the current outdoor basketball court and helping us make the decision that we wanted to go ahead and make that an indoor gymnasium slash basketball court. But Mr. Hollub then talked about those kids that they're just not ready yet to play inside, and they need that outside court to play with, and how important it is for their development. And I just, I just wanted to thank him for filling this need at South Ormond Neighborhood Center. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Persis.
Commissioner Kent kind of said exactly what I wanted to say, but I also called Paul Hollub on the phone and just thanked him, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, for even thinking about doing something like that, and now it's going to happen. So, it's just so wonderful. So, I definitely agree with everything Commissioner Kent said. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? If not, we will start the public hearing process, and I will open the public hearings, ask our clerk to read 8A.
Ordinance number 2022-11, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to incorporate the provisions of the Second Amendment, North US Highway 1, and our local service boundary agreement between the city of Ormond Beach and the county of Alusha, authorizing transmittal, providing for a public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-11, read by title only.
Thank you. The only card I have is from the representative of the applicant. I think, is that as needed? Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Glenn. Is there a motion in the second? Move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion on this second reading? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we go to 8B.
Ordinance number 2022-12, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map for real property totaling 19.19 plus or minus acres associated with the Ridge Haven, proposed subdivision from low-intensity commercial LIC to medium-density residential MDR, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-12, read by title only.
Thank you. And I do have a couple cards. First is Steve Zumwalt.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Steve Zumwalt. I live at 37 Village Drive in the Village of Pine Run Homewinter Association. The selling point of Plantation Oaks, there were three items: affordable housing, a golf in the Village of Pine Run Homeowners Association. The selling point of Plantation Oaks, there were three items: affordable housing, a golf course, and school. Currently, we'll address number one, which is the affordable housing. Manufactured homes are running about $280,000 a pop. The land rent is running about 780 a month. That doesn't sound affordable to me. That's probably why the developer wants to remove the 55 and over designation. Number two, the golf course. Golf course is gone. The school is being requested to be removed at heavy residential area to replace it. I'm against the Ridge Haven development. The residential units over the next 10 years are probably going to be around 4,700 new residential units, and we're dealing with only Ormond Crossings and Plantation Oaks. Now granted, Ormond Crossings has sort of been put on the back burner. I understand that Elite Properties is selling the Ormond Crossings area. But I also understand that the City of Ormond Beach would still be interested in processing that as residential area for the new folks. And I believe there's an extension that's been set, set aside up to 2034 for that to happen. One last statement I would like to make is we need to be planning for the future of all these homes. We can't be planning for yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Glenn, Glenn Storch.
My name is Glenn Storch. And I just want to remind everyone, I didn't understand what the previous talk was discussing, because this is only dealing with one piece. It's not dealing with Plantation Oaks. It's not dealing with anything else. It's only dealing with the proposed Ridge Haven comprehensive plan designations, which if you recall, in this case, reduces what is currently permitted to over 1,000 units, to about 298 units. And that's all. So that's all we're doing in this case, is we're reducing density on this particular site. We will then come back. We've already started working with the neighbors. We're going to be, we're going to be having a neighborhood meeting. And I'll look forward to, to, uh, working with them as well. But in this case, I think this is only the comp plan amendment that reduces density. Thank you, Glenn. I don't have any other cards. Just need a motion and a second. I'm move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance amending the future land use element and the intergovernmental coordination elements of the comprehensive plan by incorporating the provisions of the Second Amendment, North US Highway 1, interlocal service boundary agreement, ISBA, between the City of Ormond Beach and the County of Volusia, providing for transmitting copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the County of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-14, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask, I don't have any cards, but I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, Planning Director. This is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to incorporate the second interlocal service boundary map area. So the area that you see in the gray area, again, Plantation Oaks is located here. Addison Drive is here. So this was the second interlocal service boundary agreement. What we have done with the other comprehensive plan amendments is we've incorporated the original interlocal service boundary agreement and the first amended. So we do that through the future land use element. We created density conditions mirroring what you saw in the previous two items, limiting the density to 298 units. This is the most difficult to change in the future. So basically, the applicants are of Ridge Haven, are committed to that 298. We've also included in our intergovernmental coordination element, incorporating the second interlocal service boundary area. The planning board recommended approval of seven to zero. If approved, we would transmit to Volusia County Growth Management Commission, other cities and state agencies, and bring it back to the city commission for second, second reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen? I think that makes good sense. I just, at this point, need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-14.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commiss, Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8D.
Resolution number 2022-62, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the proposed Neighborhood Scoop Ice Cream Shop located at 100 West Granada Boulevard within the B4 Central Business Zoning District within the Downtown Overlay District to allow alternative building signage totaling approximately 25 square feet, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-62, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
This is a request for a special exception. Our land development code allows individual sites to go through a special exception process based on conditions and apply for a development order. This site, if you recall, was a former gas station, has had substantial redevelopment and architectural attributes given to it. One of the architectural embellishments has been these two walls, which would block the wall signage. So the creative solution that was developed was a 25-square-foot sign that is in between poles. There would be a pole on the back to support it. Staff is recommending approval. The planning board also recommended approval. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Dorian Burke is here on behalf of the applicant. If anybody has any questions. Hers is the only card I have. Otherwise, I need a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, move approval on this item for Neighborhood Scoop.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I just, I just have a question, just for clarification, Stephen.
Commissioner.
This is, this doesn't meet our code because it's not physically attached to a wall.
Correct. A wall sign can't extend out, I believe, any more than 12 inches. So this is, is not attached to the wall. It was, there's a separation between that back wall that'll have a pole to it.
Right. Okay. I, I just wanted to, you know, just for the benefit of everybody who might be listening or seeing this, I mean, this is a perfectly legal sign, except for the fact that it isn't physically attached to a wall. It's out where you can see it as you drive by.
Correct. And the square, square footage is less than, than what the code allows.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent.
The location of this, I, no questions for you, Stephen. I was just going to say the location for the sign makes total sense to me. And for somebody that has spent all 47 years of his life in Ormond Beach, I can just say, that used to be the power station. And when I was in high school, you could get three power station hot dogs for 99 cents. Think about that with today's inflation. Three hot dogs for 99 cents at the power station. And that corner has been an eyesore. So Ms. Burke, if you could just let Mr. Jones know, it, it matches his creativity and the theme that he has done in downtown Ormond Beach. And I'm, I'm super excited to vote yes for this.
Anyone else?
Me too.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8E.
Resolution number 2022-63, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the proposed Pump House Restaurant located at 124 West Granada Boulevard within the B4 Central Business Zoning District within the Downtown Overlay District to allow alternative building signage totaling approximately 30.33 square feet, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-63, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And again, Stephen, if you could give us some background on this item. Stephen Spraker, Planning Director.
This request for a special exception is located at the building next to the previous one at 124 West Granada. Again, recently redone architecturally. The request is to allow this signage on the face of the, on the L portion of the building. Our code does allow projecting signs, but it does have a maximum limit of 12 square feet. So this sign is at approximately 30 square feet. So it exceeds what staff can approve. Again, there's a process they can go through, a special exception, to have the city commission review and act upon it. This is a simulation, trying to Photoshop what the sign would look like. Staff is recommending, recommending approval, and the planning board also recommended approval.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Deputy Mayor Persis.
I don't have a question for Stephen, but I just have a comment that I think this is like the cutest sign I've ever seen. I absolutely love it. I love barbecue. I love pigs. I think it adds charm and character to Granada. And I am, I cannot wait to vote yes for this one.
Move approval, Mayor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please, Commissioner Kent.
Yeah, I would just say on, on this sign, I'm also going to vote for this. And I know it exceeds our, our sign limit, but, you know, the pump house, which is going to give our residents and our visitors another dining option in the downtown, that is, and if you have not been to the downtown recently, I mean, the place is hopping. It's bustling. It's exactly what we were trying to do 15-plus years ago. And how can you have a small pig sign? I mean, you got to have a big old fat pig for the sign, right? And I'm with Commissioner Persis. I, I too like, like spare ribs. So I'm for it tonight.
Very good. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we will close the public hearings. Thank you. Getting hungry. We will go to second reading of ordinances, 9A.
Ordinance number 2022-13, an ordinance regarding the office of mayor and city commissioners for Zone 1 through 4 by providing for and calling a primary municipal election of the registered electors of the City of Ormond Beach to be held on August 23rd, 2022, providing for and calling a regular municipal election of the registered electors residing in the City of Ormond Beach to be held on November 8, 2022, providing for qualifying and election procedures, establishing a date for taking office, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding for services and materials with the County of Volusia, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-13, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we are now at the point in our meeting where we begin reports, suggestions, and requests. We start tonight with our city manager, Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may know that Gerald Purdue, Jared Purdue was appointed as the Secretary of Transportation for the entire state of Florida. He previously was Secretary for District 5. I was fortunate last week to have a virtual meeting with Mr. Purdue, along with his Assistant Secretary for Engineering, Will Watts, and his Assistant Secretary for Strategic Development, Brad Thorburn, Volusia County Manager, George Reckonwald, and Debbie Cotton, President and CEO of the Chamber, also joined me in the virtual meeting, as well as Sean Finley and Miriam Giabi. We told the secretary that we were sorry to see him leave District 5, but we are thrilled that he's up at the state level. And we just learned earlier this week that John Tyler from District 5 was promoted to District 5 Secretary. During the pandemic, we invited District 5 to come to Ormond Beach for a tour. Secretary Purdue and John Tyler, along with Marie Mbobo and one or two others from the district, joined them. We had the unique opportunity to have them tour Ormond Beach and see the transportation issues from our eyes. And Secretary Purdue tells everybody about his trip to Ormond and how valuable that was to him, to see from the, the city's eyes and the residents' eyes, what was important to them. So we were delighted to hear that. Our purpose of our meeting to talk to the secretary was to express the importance of the I-95 US-1 interchange to our business community, our residents, and our tourists. Not only is this a vital component of the Volusia County transportation network, it's the gateway to Volusia County. It's the oldest, or we think it's the oldest interchange, the I-95 interchange, and we don't believe it's as safe as it could be for our residents. County Manager Reckonwald shared with the secretary the importance of that interchange to the county, and that they wholeheartedly support the continued process to design that interchange, as did Ms., Mrs. Cotton, who talked about the need for our business community. We also shared with the secretary the burgeoning development that's occurring on that corridor. And with Security First coming in, they built that $30 million building and 450 new employees, that it needs to be safe for all of our travel as well. He, as you know, we are in preliminary design for that particular interchange. When FDOT works through that process, they do a preliminary design, then they go to design, then they go to right-of-way acquisition, and then they go to construction dollars. With the help of Mrs. Giabi, the, we were able to convince the then District 5 Secretary, Mr. Purdue, to combine the PD&E and the preliminary design and the design. And what that means is if they like the work of the preliminary design engineer, they can use him for the, the final design. So they are, they've already agreed to that. Our ask at this particular virtual meeting was for right-of-way acquisition dollars for them to put that in their five-year funding plan. They're working on their five-year funding plan now. That'll be developed, you know, mid-June, late-June, early-July. So we're very hopeful for, hopeful for that. And then additionally, after that, they would move to construction dollars. So we were very appreciative that he took our meeting. So shortly after being appointed, we've developed a great working relationship with him when he was here as District 5 Secretary. So I just wanted to update you on that because I think it was a great success that we had that meeting. And I'll keep you posted on that. I don't have any other issues. If you want to chat with me about anything, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City, Commissioner Kent.
Yeah. Ms. Shanahan, this, coming Friday, May 6th, first Friday of the month, do we have a movie at Rockefeller Gardens?
Yes, we do. It's Onward.
Onward?
Not Upward, right? It's Onward. There's two movies.
Great.
But apparently, this is a heart tugger. So, yes, we are going to, and we think the weather will be beautiful.
Yes. Thank you for that. And just a request, the meeting right before that first Friday movie, will we have it, if you were one of your staff members, would just advertise it here at the meeting so that people hear it and they know about it?
Absolutely will be.
I don't think there's a problem with attendance, but I just think it's a good thing to have that communication.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yep, thank you.
Very good. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No comments. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Kent.
Great. I'm going to briefly just talk about a couple of things. The first one is, this past week, we had the Vadner Park grand opening. And if you have not been to Seminole Drive and seen Vadner Park and what has been done with the Garden Club of Volusia Country, I think, I hope I said that right.
Yes.
I think I did. You need to go check it out. It is, all of, all of the flora is of a natural habitat that is indigenous to Florida and this part of Florida. It's a, it's a passive park. It's a great place to birdwatch or just sit and think. It's a great place to birdwatch or just sit and think, have a little picnic. There's benches around there. It's a great outdoor classroom. I'm extremely impressed with our partnership with, with that group and with the city's piece of that. And they really, really were bragging about Robert Carolyn and his team. And you know, Mr. Carolyn, it's been a while since I bragged about you, but you've deserved it and you've had it coming because your bedside manner with our customers, which are our residents, is, I believe, second to none. You listen to them and you try to accommodate them. I don't think you're a pushover. You know, you're not going to do something that can't be done, but you are helpful and your team is helpful. And for that, I say thank you. And my second thing is the Kiwanis Kids reading program. You know, what a fantastic thing that happens right here for Ormond Beach kids. And I mean, the, the school is the oldest school in Ormond Beach. I mean, Andy Romano taught there. My mother went to school there until they opened up Osceola Elementary. My kid sister teaches there right now. And they get to come to city hall if they want to for field trips because Ms. Shanahan and her team allow great things like that and allow the kids to come in and see how government works, which is, which is fantastic. And I'm so pleased that our city is helping out with that as far as getting the word out, advertising a little bit. I think that's, that's wonderful. And if you haven't heard, this Friday, we have a movie, May 6th, and it's going to be Onward. And I heard it's a tear, I heard it's a tearjerker. So if you're looking for something fun and wholesome to do with your family, you know, your city does things like this. And you know, we've, we spent a tremendous amount of money 10-plus years ago at Rockefeller Gardens to make sure you could utilize it at any time of the year. Because when we used to have a heavy rain there, you couldn't utilize that park for days, sometimes even more than a week. And you know, we did extensive rehab and drainage, drainage. We have a water wheel that was there when, you know, same style when I was a child. My mother used to take me there for picnics on, on her bicycle, on a little kid seat. Great memories. And you can go and enjoy a free movie under the stars at Rockefeller Gardens. And it doesn't matter your age. Sometimes the sponsor of the movie is there with free popcorn. But it's a, it's a great opportunity to bring a blanket or a couple of chairs and bring your kids, no matter their age. You could be 80 and your kids are 50. Bring them. And have a, have a great evening, make some wholesome memories and enjoy it because it's there for you. With that, I say good night, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Persis.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, again. I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Kent said about Vadner Park. It's absolutely just beautiful. You have to go and visit. And one of the extra things there too, that I really liked, they have this beautiful water feature that just makes, you know, the water sound, it just kind of makes you relax and just, you know, chill. It's just, it's just really beautiful. And the ladies of, of this organization have worked tirelessly to bring that to our city. So I'm just very grateful and just so happy that all of us were able to attend. And it was just really, I know that those, those ladies were so happy that the entire commission was there. It was just fabulous. Also, yesterday, no, not yesterday, Sunday, my husband and I went to the art in the park right here, and it was just incredible. I loved it. We, we purchased some art and I really felt like the quality of the art was, was really very high. A lot, I saw a lot of buyers, a lot of people having a great time. So I just want to compliment the city on, on that. You just did a fabulous job. I know it was very well attended. And I was so sorry that I had to miss the Celtic Festival because that's another one of my very, very favorite things. I like to try to throw axes, which I'm not very good at doing. But that weekend, I was moving my mom into an assisted living and I couldn't go. But fortunately, she's all settled in and doing well. But I hated to miss that event because I, I know how hard everybody works to bring that here to Ormond Beach. And with that, I'll say good night. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor and Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Vadner Park, what it's turned into, it's, and what it used to be, I mean, it's the perfect example of a community coming together. A wonderful public-private partnership that turns a part that almost no one even knew existed into what it is now, which is spectacular and one of a kind in the whole state. Very good work from staff on that. Furthermore, I'd like to thank Sean Finley. A couple of traffic calming issues that's come before the city, and Sean has been up to snuff, as he always is, we know that, handling the situation. And it's one of the things that is sort of behind-the-scenes constituent services that all of Ormond Beach does so well, but I want to put you out on the spot, Sean. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton, Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, last weekend, the Celtic Festival was a huge success. If you weren't there, you missed a great event. The Vadner Park grand opening was really spectacular. I'm very excited about it. The, the focus is all on native plants. The Garden Club of Halifax Country removed all of the non-native plants and trees from that park. If you don't know where the park is, if you know the cemetery on beachside, hillside cemetery, this is immediately south of it at Seton Trail and what's the, Seminole, Seton Trail and Seminole. And, and the, and the, all of the new, or all of the native plants that were planted have QR codes on them. So anything that you see there, you can look it up with your phone and then you can see it at full bloom, you can see it as it matures, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm very excited about that and learning more about native plants and incorporating them into my property. The unity tour, I wanted to just mention that our police chief, Jesse Godfrey, will be riding this coming week in a bicycle unity tour honoring fallen officers, law enforcement officers. And it, it ends up in Washington DC. And some of the commission members will be up there with him to celebrate that. But it's a, it's a great event that recognizes the officers who have died in the line of duty and honors their surviving family members. So chief, appreciate you, you doing that and, and being a part of that. Two other comments quickly. I wanted to thank chief, fire chief Dave King. Some of you may know that I've been involved with ministry in Cuba for several years. And I was down there recently and the farm that we're involved in helping to create, where they're growing food for, for the church, for needy, needy people, as well as to sell some of the produce, to raise money for the church, was impacted by a brush fire in a very significant way. They lost acres of crops. And while I was down there, you know, seeing the results of that fire, it triggered in my mind that a few years ago, we had scavenged some fire hoses out of a warehouse building that I was involved with. And I had just put them away in storage. I didn't, you know, we were going to throw them away and I said, man, I don't, I don't want to throw that away. So I was mentioning that to the chief and he said, well, you know, before you take them down there, you ought to pressure test them. And I'm like, pressure test them? Well, that's, that's probably a pretty good idea because if they can't hold pressure, they're not going to be very good if they ever have to fight a fire with them, right? So the other day, the chief offered to help us do that. So I took five sections of hose, it was almost 400 feet of hose, out to station 94, out by Hunter's Ridge. And the pumper truck was cranked up to 200 PSI. And all but one of the, all of, all but one of the sections held pressure great. It was a real learning experience and I also found out that's something that they, they don't do anymore, but there's one of the younger guys on the fire department stationed out there. So he, he got to, he got to participate in a lost art, a skill that only the older guys, the senior guys on the fire department. But, but the chief was right in there the whole time, helping us out and even helped roll up the hose at the end. So thank you, chief, for, thank you for, for allowing that. It's going to be used in a, in a mighty way down there in, in Cuba. And the last thing I just wanted to say was that for all you guys, don't do what I did. Sunday is Mother's Day. And I'll, I'll never forget that the first Sunday of my marriage, I really didn't do anything special for my wife. And she said, you know, at the end of the day, she said, hey, you know, this was Mother's Day. And I said, yeah, I know. I took care of my mom. And she said, well, well, so you don't think of me as like the mother of your soon-to-be children or whatever? And I said, okay, I get the message. So any lady in your life is a mother and take care of them this Sunday. Make sure that they feel special. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, for that wise, wise advice. Glenn Storch talked about the PACE program. I had asked Randy or Joyce to look at it, but I don't know if they can do that with just, just me asking, but if there's a majority of the commission that wants them to look into that, make sure there's no issues with it, if you could let me know or let them know now. I'm fine with you looking at it.
I, yes, I swear.
I'm not saying I'm in favor of it without knowing all the details, but if, if you could look at it and let us know. Anybody have a problem with that? I think everybody's in agreement. So thank you for that. Glenn believes that it's a good program. You know, he's a professional in the industry and he indicated he was going to get that in writing. I haven't seen that part of it yet, but, so if staff can look at it and let us know, I'd appreciate it. We have had some amazing weather these last couple of weeks and perfect timing for the great events that we've had at the Four Corners. The Celtic Festival, I thought, was a blowout. I mean, a huge attendance. Main Street worked so hard to make that a great event and their volunteers and all the staff. When I was there, it was as busy as could be. I saw so many, I don't know if this is an indicator or not, I saw so many empty kegs, maybe they had a leak in the line or something. But I thought this has to be successful with all the thousands of people who showed up and lots of smiling faces, people enjoying those activities, whether it was axe throwing or the sheepdogs herding the sheep, all the different displays that they do. It's cultural, it's educational, and then it's just a lot of fun. So a lot of vendors as well. So I hope Main Street had a great event and look forward to many more of those. Art in the Park was the next week and like Deputy Mayor Persis said, huge attendance for that as well, people enjoying the casements. Commissioner Kent mentioned one of the first things we were lucky enough to be involved in years ago was fixing those flooded Rockefeller Gardens that were a nightmare when you had, had rains, putting in the appropriate drainage, fixing the whole flow of that park. It's just been an amazing facility for our city that has entertained in the hundreds of thousands of people since that time. Wonderful work that was done to make that happen. And so Art in the Park was another wild success. And these are the things that make Ormond Beach the amazing community that it is, that provides the quality of life, not only for our residents, but for people from all over the area who like to come and enjoy, enjoy these different events. One thing about the weather these past couple of weeks is that it's been dry. And so, you know, almost like clockwork, we can expect the reuse water issue to pop up and, and I've seen at least one email about it this past week. It's a demand issue and I don't know how people think about reuse water. I mean, the purpose of reuse water, having that program is to improve the environment, really, that's the primary purpose. The other part of it is to, to provide water that's maybe a little bit cheaper than the normal potable water for folks to irrigate their lawns. And Sean Finley has worked very hard to create a system that works for that purpose if people will abide by the schedule. I saw that our PIO, Jen Elston, put out a, a great social media post that explains exactly what the schedule is and how it should work. But I, I don't know, just the way people think about it, I don't know how we can change how folks think about it. The mentality is that it's this unlimited resource that's always there. And then people say, well, it's because you have growth and then we don't have reused water. Well, if you have growth and you have more people using water, then you have more reused water. And so you're in a conundrum because I don't think there's ever enough reused water if people think I can just turn on the tap and let it run 24/7. And there are people that will do that if you let them. I don't want to say who they are, but you can drive around and, and tell almost, or at least you used to. But if people will abide by the schedule, we should have very few problems, even in peak drought times, which, which we're in that time where we're having some, some drought situations. So I just wanted to highlight that. I don't know if newspaper articles can help explain that situation, provide information, if we need to pay for advertising to get those schedules in the different papers and keep posting it on social media, that might be, that might be one answer as well. But it's a good program. It's good for the environment and it can be very beneficial. Back to some positive things, Vadner Park was an amazing morning and they had that date on the books for maybe 10 months, 11 months. I think that's part of the reason the whole commission got there, other than the fact that we were just so impressed with how the park turned out and the hard work of everybody involved. It was, it was amazing. The park is beautiful. If you can just go there and spend 15 or 20 minutes, you'll be so impressed. And one thing I wanted to point out, not only the city of Ormond Beach and the Garden Club of the Halifax Country, but the Racing and Recreation District was also a huge financial contributor to that. And I had seen our school board member, Carl Persis, earlier, who also sits on that Racing and Recreation District. So I didn't want to, didn't want to leave them out of a celebration and congratulation because they, they donated some big dollars for that. This morning, I had the opportunity to join our city manager and our public information officer, Joyce Shanahan and Jen Elston, respectively, on the Good Day Daytona Beach program. And it was actually all about Ormond Beach. We spent an hour with Trey Johnson, who was a wonderful host, and covered a variety of issues and just had a great interview. And I wanted to, to point that out, the good work, not only that Joyce and her staff do every day, but Jen keeping, keeping us straight on the facts and information. Thank you for that and thank you for being there. And then one other thing before I close, the Size Up Ormond Beach Business Analytics Tool. Our Economic Development Director, Brian Roddemaker, has been working with our local businesses with this free program that is, it's free for our local businesses. And it's an incredible program where our businesses can benchmark their performance, they can optimize their advertising, discover new customers, and then really dig down into a demographic analysis on items like labor force, consumer expenditure data. And you get a tailored analysis of all those things for your business, whether you're an established business of 10 or 20 years or you're a new startup entrepreneur. This program really is valuable. And I've talked to some of the folks in our community that are established businesses and they can't believe that the city is offering this to, not only to them, but to people who are interested in starting businesses and are starting new entrepreneurial businesses. So I wanted to point that out. Brian, thank you for doing that. I know it's extra work, extra time, but it's a valuable tool. And there are videos, if you're interested in, in watching those, and you can enjoy that. I will close with just a couple of upcoming events. On May 5th, at 11:00 AM, we have the PD swearing-in ceremony. That's going to be fantastic at the PD training room. May 9th, this is much anticipated and very exciting, a ribbon cutting at the Ormond Beach Art Museum and Gardens. Some amazing synergy going on there with the new Publix and the Loman condo project on Halifax. Just some, some exciting upgrades to downtown Ormond on the beach. Just some exciting upgrades to downtown Ormond on the beachside. May 10th will be the Obi Life Airport Focus, and then May 30th will be our Memorial Day Remembrance Service. So with all that, thank you all, and good night.